We're looking for one more council member, but we'll get started at this point. Welcome, everybody. Today is Tuesday, June 23rd, 2015. It is a regular city council meeting at the Veterans Memorial Hall tonight at 6:00 PM. We're located at 29 Surf Street. Welcome. For the record, we do have a quorum. All members are present, and we will have our fifth member here shortly. So for the record, we'll call the meeting to order, and we'll begin with a moment of silence if you'll please join me. And now we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. If you please rise and join me. Ready to begin?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all.
Now, moving on to council members' reports and announcements, and I'll start off with my brief announcement. I went to a NRC, so that's a regulatory, the Nuclear Regulatory Commission invited local electeds to a meeting this afternoon, and so my message is to inform the public that there will be an open house, and I've got it written down here, there's an open house that's hosted by the Nuclear Regulatory Commission, and that's going to be tomorrow at the Embassy Suites from 2:00 to 5:00 PM. The open house hosted by the NRC will basically cover items in regards to Diablo Canyon Nuclear Power Plant. Issues will be from spent fuel, emergency preparedness, seismic evaluations, license renewal, and basically any questions that the public may have. So that's Embassy Suites in San Luis Obispo, 2:00 to 5:00 PM tomorrow. It's an open house. Following the open house, there is a meeting between Pacific Gas and Electric Company and the NRC. It's a business meeting from 6:00 to 9:00. The public is welcome to attend that. Following their meeting, there will be, as with the open house, answer questions session for anybody who's curious for that. So that concludes my announcement for myself, and I'll turn it to my left. Matt, do you have any announcements?
Sure, I have two. This coming Friday, there is going to be a fundraiser at San Luis Sports Therapy on Shasta for Project Surf Camp. It starts at 10:00 in the morning. There'll be a barbecue for those of you who want to come out. That's going to be at San Luis Sports Therapy. Also, Project Surf Camp will be starting July 10th. That's a Friday. That's coming in about three weeks. We invite all of Morro Bay to come out and check out Project Surf Camp, which is a camp for kids with special needs. Thank you.
Thanks, Matt. Christine?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to remind everyone that the city's Fourth of July celebration is coming up on, you guessed it, July 4th this year, and we have our entire fantastic and unique day's activities, starting off with registration at 9:00 AM if you want to participate in the Morro Bay Mile Skateboard Race. Noon, we have a lot of big doings and perhaps some politicos joining us to cut the ribbon at our bridge over Morro Creek, pedestrian and bike bridge. That begins at noon, and then immediately after the ribbon cutting, we will be riding across the bridge, and it will kick off this year's Fourth of July Red, White, and Blue Bike Parade. So for those of you wanting to participate in those two activities, they're going to be staged on the north side of the bridge at Morro Creek. So that would be parking for those things would be at Morro Bay High School this year. So don't come to The Rock, please, and you could, if you happen to be there by accident, you could probably participate, but if you do plan to come other than on a skateboard or on a bike, please do stage at the Morro Bay High School this year and not at The Rock. So hopefully, we will bust our record of about 550 riders in the bike parade from last year, so hopefully, this, having the bridge will be an enticement to have a new, set a new record. Following that, at Tidlin's Park, from noon until 5:00, we will have a lineup of live local music. Boomer Surf Trio, Panga, and Green to White are our three bands. We will have local favorites helping us at 2:00, celebrate our actual Independence Day. I hear Thomas Jefferson may be there. I'm not quite sure if that's true, how he's going to get here, not sure yet, but that's the rumor. We also have a local favorite. Skylar Evans is a young woman who goes to Morro Bay High. She will be singing the National Anthem for us again this year. We've seen her really grow up singing the National Anthem, so that'll be really special. And that, the program will be at 2:00 PM at Tidlin's. So the event starts at Tidlin's at noon and goes until 5:00. The ceremony will be at 2:00 PM, and then throughout the day, we will have lots and lots of children's activities, all for free. There will be a little bit of vending, but we encourage people to bring their own picnics. And then there will be also many of our city vehicles on the land and on the sea for you to take a look at and enjoy. So if I've forgotten anything, I know that my co-chair, Noah Smuckler, will fill you in by the time it gets down to him. So thanks, everyone. Hope to see you on the 4th.
Thanks, Christine. John?
Thank you. Wanted to let the community know, for those of you that know for sure that you had chickenpox as a child, there is an uptick right now in the last six months in California outbreak of herpes zoster, which is shingles. And the number one precipitant is stress, like coming to a city council meeting and speaking before the podium. But it is true, stress, direct sunlight exposure, excess exposure to sun, et cetera. There is a preventive vaccine called Zostivax if you're 50 or older. It's highly recommended that you get that, and I give this to you as a public health announcement because you do not want to get herpes zoster or shingles. It is very painful. It lasts a significant number of weeks, and it's difficult to treat. And so the first sign usually, just for those of you that are now worried about it, is rash, usually in this area of the body, but also possibly here. In fact, often, but that is true, and I just encourage you to be vaccinated if you're 50 or older. Thanks.
Noah?
No announcements, and Christine did a great job of reviewing our family fun day for Morro 4th. You did mention lots of kids' activities, but also plan is to do, again, a fair amount of lawn games and things for the adults as well, so kind of a full range of activities and fun things to do all day. So look forward to seeing people out there on July 4th at Tidlin's.
Great. Thanks, everybody. Now we'll move on to public presentations. We have a Morro Bay Police Officer's Certificates of Appreciation and a Morro Bay Car Show update, and I'll turn to our city manager for our Morro Bay Police Officer's Certificates of Appreciation.
Thank you, Mayor Irons. Mayor Irons, if you would join me down here along with Chief Christie and Sergeant Porter and Officer Stewart, we all come on up here, and maybe you guys could have just arranged yourselves right over there. Put the two, there you go. You two guys get in the middle of those two fine people there. So I just, you know, in a previous life of mine dealing with police forces, one of the things I tried to tell our policemen were, when somebody's not doing anything wrong and they see the police, they ought to be thinking, oh, great, there's our policeman. It ought to be a positive sign that our police are there. And if you are doing something wrong and you see the police, you ought to be saying, oh, no, you know, there's the police, and that's good, too, because these guys have a tough job of enforcing the law, keeping us safe, but also being an asset to the community. So a few weeks ago, we had a member of our, actually, a tragic situation in our community, won't use names, but a couple, the man died. These two gentlemen were on the scene. They had nothing to do with that. The police department responded sadly. They were not able to resuscitate the gentleman, but these two guys took great care of the surviving spouse and then contacted her family in the valley to make sure she had the support that she needed, and then went back the next day with flowers and with a condolence card, just on their own. That's just what they were doing. And that's incredible. So you've got a police force that cares about people, that has hearts. They lock those hearts up tight when people are doing bad stuff, and they do the right thing, and they protect our safety, but at other times, they do, well, they always do the right thing, and other times, they let those hearts wide open and care about people because that's what they're doing, whether they're doing the hard stuff or that other stuff that I just described. What they're doing is caring about folks. So we want to award them a certificate of appreciation each awarded to Sergeant Derek Porter and Officer Gene Stewart on June 23rd, 2015, for exceptional performance on May 18th, 2015, while responding to a medical aid during this critical and traumatic event. You did that, quote, "one more thing" and provided exemplary service to our community by displaying compassion and taking the extra step above the call of duty. Thank you for your professionalism and for representing our city of Morro Bay team. Signed, Jamie L. Irons, Mayor, and David Buckingham, City Manager. So thank you, guys, for an incredible job.
Thank you. And now on our next presentation, we have a Morro Bay Car Show update, and I believe Ken and Mr. Parker, Chris and Ken, Chris and Ken Show, welcome. Thanks, you guys.
Thank you. Thank you again, folks. Ken Vestafeld, and this is Chris Parker. He's our president of our car show here for the last few years. Again, thanks to Don Double D., who did the presidential duties for many, many years, and we appreciate his effort. For somebody who don't know, the car show, we're going into our 20th car show coming up next year, and, but it started actually about three years before that, when three guys got together with coffee all the time, Ron McIntosh, Dave Tope, and Steve Carnes. Unfortunately, Dave Tope and, just about a year ago, Ron McIntosh passed away, but they wanted to do something for the business in the city in the uptown area for this time of the year when it was generally slow, although that seems to have turned around a little bit in the last few years for the, for the community. But also in our, now we have Steve Carnes, who's not here. He's an architect, engineer. Dan Dorse, a former building inspector for the city of Morro Bay, and Chris Brown, who is an architect and a general contractor, and Scott Mace, who has a security business. We, Chris and his family have been with the car show from the beginning also. His mom and dad have been, every year have been the intake on the registration all day long, and so we appreciate that. The proceeds that come from the car show go to the Post 43 Explorer Group, the youth group, and the Rotary Club, who helped initiate and get the seed money started for the, for the project. So we thank them ever so much, and the Explorers, it's one of their largest fund gatherings they have, and the young ladies and gentlemen are out there at 5:00 in the morning on Saturday and Sunday and doing all kinds of work for us, so we appreciate them. And the emphasis is not on how much money that we hand out to those two individuals, it's the emphasis is on two things, bringing business into town and also to take care of the registrants themselves. They are a wonderful group of people to work with. In all my years, I've only been, missed one year, but I've been with the group for 18 years of the 19 that we've had. We've never been any problems with those people. We had one accident out of that because of a stuck throttle, but it all has worked out very good. We average over 500 vehicles out of the last 14 or 15 years of the 19 years that we've had it, and most of these people, there's only about 10 to 13% are from this county, and so most of them are going to be traveling over here. We have vehicles that come from Arizona, Oregon, Nevada, Washington State. One year, we had a car from Las Vegas, excuse me, Alaska, and so it all worked out that way. This year, a few years ago, excuse me, let me back up, we started a cruise for lunch on Friday, and it ended up being at the Ragged Point Inn. Well, this year, we had more cars go on the trip up the coast than was in the first car show, so there was over 120 vehicles that left St. Timothy's Parish Church and traveled up the coast. And so, and what happens with this group now, cars and vehicles start coming in on the Sunday before, just to show you what kind of an impact it has on the community. Regularly, I meet with them on Sunday afternoon after they arrive from a show over in Bakersfield. And so, again, to help with the community, several years ago, we started a registration on Thursday evening with some food and libation, hoping to attract the local people so it wouldn't take a little bit of heat off the Friday registration. Well, this year, we had a record of 222 vehicles that were in town, ready to go for the show, so it shows just how much they're staying here. Let me see. Sponsors. We've had three people who have sponsored this car show from day one, and it's been a wonderful thing for those, and without the sponsors, we could not do this. For years, we asked local car dealerships to come and bring their cars here, and for some reason, they chose not to do that. But we have a sponsor, his name's Ed Dina, from Dinuba, who is one of our biggest sponsors over here, and he brings a crew of almost 20 along with him, puts them in motels and feeds them also. So that's another addition. We probably stick to mostly local vendors as much as we can. We only have a couple of food vendors because we want them to go to the restaurants locally. Chris Dorn at Dorn's Restaurant calls it his Super Bowl week. That's how busy that he is, and it's just wonderful there. Got big thanks to David Owens, Village Cleaners. He's done the barbecue for several, several years, and amazingly, he served, or they served, excuse me, along with the Boy Scouts, over 700 plates in two hours. So that's a great feat. And just to wrap another thing up here is, two years ago, we had a wonderful person, Dennis Gage, has a TV station called MyClassicCar.com, which is shown throughout the whole world with car show people. Not only did he show the car show itself, but he showed a lot of this community, including up the coast. And so we hope we are going to try to attract maybe someone next year for our 20th anniversary or 20th car show. So, Chris, you got anything else to add?
I don't want to take up too much time. I just want to thank everybody in the city, or within the city, and all of our volunteers and support that helps to put it on.
And thank you, guys. Yeah, thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming up, and thank you. Great presentations from everyone. And with that, we'll move on to our public comment. And with our public comment, we open up with a business spot, and today, our business spot opener is Couch Potato, and that's not the name of the person. The name of the person is Lee Samways, Samways, excuse me, I butchered that anyway, for Couch Potato. Please come up and introduce yourself and your business, and thanks for coming up. Appreciate it.
Thank you for having me. A good evening. I hope you're all comfortable. If not, don't worry, I can make you comfortable because I'm from a furniture store. My name is Lee Samways. I work for Couch Potato. It's a business that started back in 2005 in San Luis Obispo, and since then, it's been growing pretty rapidly ever since. We now have four locations, San Luis Obispo, Santa Maria, Paso Robles, and now in beautiful Morro Bay. It's a pleasure to be here. So throughout our growing phases, you know, we've listened to our customers, and we've kind of learned what it is that they're looking for, and what they kind of want is something that's special and custom-made. So that's pretty much what we specialize in, that kind of premium product. Being so, we carry over 30 brands, including things like Basset and Borg Holder, which is actually the Amish handcrafted stuff. We've even branched off to opening our own private label under Couch Potato, so you can have your very own Couch Potato cabbage, which is kind of fun. We do dining, bedroom, we do sofas, of course, all the way to mattresses. The custom sofas that we make can be custom-made to whatever specifications you want. So if you want a special firmness or a special size, we can get it down to the exact inch that you want it. You know, we have over 1,000 fabrics to choose from, so there's a lot and a lot of options. Same goes for our custom dining program. You can make that, you know, that special table a real special kind of gathering place for you and your friends and family to enjoy. The mattress company we use, they're all handcrafted, made special to order for each person. So we kind of pay attention to those fine little details. So we all know that the Central Coast is a really tight-knit community, and we kind of have found our little niche in that, and we're very happy. Now, we've discovered that we've got to be fast and quick on our feet, able to move around and take advantage of opportunities, which is why when sadly, Morro Bay Furniture had left after being here for 30 years, we kind of saw that as an opportunity to come into a town that has actually brought a lot of customers our way to begin with. Now that we're here, we've noticed that a lot of folks just don't want to leave Morro Bay, so we've, we're really happy that that's working out for us so far. So I encourage all of you to come on down. We're on Quintana, 381 Quintana. It's a big yellow building, and I'd be happy to show you how to get comfortable. My pleasure. Thanks for having me tonight.
All right, Lee, thanks for making it fun, too. All right. All right, with that, we can officially open public comment, and this is the time for public comment for items that are not on the agenda. You have three minutes, and welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. I'm Mike Sherrod. I'm here with my wife Julie and daughter Camille, and our son Vincent's away on a trip this week, but he's here in spirit, and we are the Sherrod family. Tonight, we're here to request this council agenda as a variance fee repayment request for discussion at a future council meeting. Why should we do that, you ask? It's a really good question. Here's a bit of background as to why we're making the request. Back in 2008, we decided to add about 6,000 square feet to our, of space to our home to accommodate our growing family. So we convened a pre-application meeting with the planning director at the time to go over our plans for adding on to our existing home. At the conclusion of that pre-op meeting, the planning director informed us we had a conforming project and it wouldn't require a variance or a conditional use permit. So we went forward, the city approved our project, and in fact, issued us permit-ready status in 2009. That timing couldn't have been worse for construction because 2009 heralded in the Great Recession, so we had to put that project on hold. When times got better, we came back in 2013, same project. How different, new city staff, however, changed their interpretation of their own municipal code standard, stating that we now own a set of non-conforming project plans with no budget left to start over and redesign. The only option to not lose our investment up to this point was to take a gamble on a variance in the CUP, which costs another $3,300 to take that gamble. Fortunately, the planning commission agreed with our position and granted the variance in the CUP. At the same time, they also directed the new planning director to issue a memo clarifying the R1 setback language to eliminate the potential for staff to make alternate interpretations in the future. We're unfortunately caught in this awkward transition period between when previous planning staff interpreted the R1 standard one way and new staff interpreted it a different way. But all along, our project and the R1 setback language remained constant. The only variable was the shifting interpretation of the city's R1 setback. Look, we know the situation's messy. However, the city's inability to consistently interpret its own standard cost our family a significant amount of money, and we would simply like the city to refund the fee we ultimately paid to cover the cost of the city's own error. Given the unique set of facts surrounding this case, we believe this is a fair and reasonable request. I think this project really fits the definition of unique. It's really one of a kind. We encourage you to go back, if you haven't already, and watch the August 5th, 2014 Planning Commission meeting to gain a full understanding of the circumstances surrounding our request, and welcome the opportunity to answer all of your questions at a future council meeting and to put this matter to rest and ensure those families that come after us have a great experience working with our new community services department. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Public comments open. Anybody else come up? Thank you.
Good evening, council and mayor. I'm Jan Surby. I'm a Morro Bay resident, and I also serve on the board of the Morro Coast Audubon Society, which is a county-wide organization with over 1,000 members, of whom 80-plus live here in Morro Bay. Included in the Morro Coast Audubon mission is the conservation and restoration of ecosystems, focusing on the biological diversity of birds, other wildlife, and their habitats. To help fulfill that mission, we are asking you to consider an ordinance to ban the use of expanded polystyrene here in Morro Bay. This is a non-biodegradable product that is not only harmful to the environment but hazardous to public health. We believe the action you take to ban polystyrene foam is supported by the Morro Bay's Climate Action Plan of August 2013. This plan states that the city's long-range plan is to reduce greenhouse gases from city government operations and community activities, and to achieve the community goal of improving public health and quality of life. Not only is polystyrene dangerous and often deadly for wildlife, who ingest the particles, mistaking them for food, polystyrene is a threat to our human public health. Food containers made with polystyrene can leach this toxin styrene, which causes some toxins to be absorbed into our bloodstream and tissue. Polystyrene foam may seem like a cheap, convenient material for businesses, but its true costs to our health and environment are borne by others, including taxpayers and consumers. We urge you to pass banning polystyrene on the agenda, then pass the ban, taking the step towards improving health and ecosystems for both wildlife and humans. And I'd like to submit the full letter, this was just excerpts, a hard copy. Thank you.
Thank you, Jan.
My name is Joan Carter, and I was a resident of Morro Bay for 12 years. I recently moved back to San Luis Obispo, and so some of, I've spoken up here many times during the time I lived out here, but there's some new faces up there now. So during the time that I lived here, I worked as a volunteer at Pacific Wildlife Care, and I also did the beach walk, which, you know, picks up debris along the coast beaches up here in the sand. I did that, I've done that every year for many years, so I've had a lot of exposure to seeing styrofoam out there. One of the things that I really wanted to stress is that once you have really been a party of an animal that has been damaged by styrofoam, it takes on a whole new meaning to you. For many years, I was over at the Wildlife Center, and to stand there at the table and to try to pull out debris out of a pelican's pouch, one thing that is not so hard is fish hooks and fish line because you can cut it out, but styrofoam falls into tiny little pieces, and those little pieces either go down, you just can't get a hold of it and pull it out, and it goes down into the animal's throat, and they either choke and die, or it lines the intestines so that their ability to absorb nutrients is hindered, and they may starve to death. So if you're trying to do that, and the bird dies on the table from stress and from the injuries and the sickness that have incurred, banning styrofoam is not just a good idea. It's a hard It's a heart-wrenching experience, and you don't, you'll really get over that. It becomes a part of your vision when you are looking at wildlife from then on. And so I'm just saying that, in some way, if you will look at what San Luis Obispo did, they voted five to zero, the council, to ban styrofoam. And Morro Bay can be the second city to do that here. So I'm hoping that that's going to happen. One of the arguments, of course, that always comes up from the business people is, well, it'll be too expensive, it'll be too hard to do. But Morro Bay's a tourist town. Tourists come here to see wildlife, and the business person can say, "We don't have styrofoam because styrofoam harms wildlife, and we like to take care of our animals." So as I said, it's not just a good idea. It's like, we as the human race need to be taking care of all the species that are out there, and we are responsible to do that, and this is a very simple way to do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Joan.
Good evening, Morro Bay City Council members. I am Rosalie Valvo of Morro Bay. I have come to support a ban on expanded polystyrene foam, AKA styrofoam. We are blessed in Morro Bay and in this world to be living among so many other species. It would be lonely and dull without them, yet we create so many hazards for them. Styrofoam is one of these hazards. When it is disposed of, it blows around and into storm drains. It mimics food for the marine animals, but provides nasty chemicals instead of nutrition. It is a blight on the ocean, not very neighborly. Some local residents have already switched to more environmentally friendly materials. I salute them. What about the others? What is stopping them? Yes, styrofoam is cheap and convenient in the short run. When it comes to the environment, we need to think past that. The environment is for the long run. I support a Morro Bay citywide ban on expanded styrofoam, expanded styro, whatever it is, because it's the right thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Rosalie.
Good evening, mayor and council. My name is Noak Tantrus. I am a resident of Morro Bay. I am also here to support the ban of polystyrene styrofoam. Eighty cities in California have banned styrofoam, including San Francisco, San Jose, Malibu, Santa Cruz, and recently San Luis Obispo. Polystyrene foam is a threat to human health and the environment. It is composed of benzene and styrene, which is our known human carcinogens. A 1988 survey published by the Foundation of Advancements in Science and Education also found styrene in human fatty tissues with a frequency of 100% at levels from eight to 350 nanograms per gram. The 350 nanograms per gram level is one-third of levels known to cause neurotoxic symptoms. It's determined that styrofoam drinking cups leach styrofoam into the liquid that they contain. The cups apparently lose weight during the time they are used. Benzene and styrene have been linked to incidents of Parkinson's disease and leukemia. Production of styrofoam is energy-intensive. It has been rated by the California Integrated Waste Management Board to have the second worst environmental production cost in the U.S. A 1986 EPA report on solid waste named the polystyrene manufacturing process as the fifth-largest creator of hazardous waste. It's not usually recycled due to the cost of transportation and degreasing. Twenty-five to 30% of the landfills are dedicated to plastics, including styrofoam. It takes 500 years to decompose. It's a primary source of urban litter and a main pollutant of the ocean, bays, and water sources, and other water sources. It's costly to taxpayers. EPS foam comprises 15% of street and highway litter, and local governments are spending over $300 million annually to clean up and control litter. Caltrans spends approximately $60 million annually to remove roadside litter and debris. The United Nations Environment Program estimated in 2006 that every square mile of ocean hosts 46,000 pieces of floating plastic. Styrofoam causes choking and starving of wildlife. Thousands of seabirds and sea turtles, seals, and other marine mammals are killed each year after ingesting plastics, including styrofoam, and getting entangled in it. Fish in the North Pacific ingest 12,000 to 24,000 tons of plastic each year, which can cause intestinal injury and death, and transfer plastic up to the food chain to bigger fish and marine mammals. There are affordable alternatives such as paper-based products with recycled content, washable reusable cups and containers, and plastic-like containers made from non-petroleum based sources like cornstarch. The average price difference between foam and non-foam is just one cent. These alternatives...
I'm going to have to ask you to conclude.
Okay. Let's let Morro Bay take leadership in banning styrofoam.
Thank you, Nora.
Good job, everybody. My name is Linda Merrill. Good evening, mayor and council members. Please consider a ban on expanded polystyrene for all the obvious reasons: waste in our oceans, danger to our wildlife, et cetera. It is possible to have biodegradable food packaging. We really can do that. No need for more hydrocarbon in our air. Please, agendize this for discussion and support eliminating the use of polystyrene in our city. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Linda. Public comment is still open for those that like to speak.
Hi, I'm Julie Sherrod, and I want to make a correction. My husband said we wanted to add 6,000 square feet. It's actually 600. So just wanted to make that for the record.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council. My name is Rigmore. I'm a resident of Morro Bay. In the eleven years I've been here, this is the first city council I have seen complete so much. We have Rob Leivik, who is just plain wonderful, and now a new city manager who has the courage to do some house cleaning and push the city forward for a better future. I'm very excited over the new marine museum we're getting down by the triangular parking lot, and was wondering if we could not also give a little sliver to the historic society? Maybe build a replica Quanza hut to house old Morro Bay stories, artifacts, pictures, et cetera? But I hope tonight, on item C1, the city will thoroughly explain to us exactly what is entailed in a boat haulout. I see you have now tried to make it sound pretty by calling it a marine service facility, but I am afraid it is still a dusty, dirty, noisy, smelly, and nasty boat haulout, which I think should be nowhere in Morro Bay. Believe me, I have seen a lot of those in my lifetime. We all have different scenarios, and since I do not see the restaurant owners, property owners, et cetera, down here complaining, maybe I have it wrong. Maybe the American boat haulouts are different than those where I'm from. I just think we have a beautiful, charming, interesting, and peaceful coastline with restaurants, harbor walks, the Rock, sea animals, birds, beaches, bike trails, soon a bridge, et cetera. So please be careful what this very valuable coastal property gets used for. Let us do something both aesthetic and smart, and something that will bring in some millions every year. But of course, this city council was duly elected, so I for one will accept whatever your decisions might be, whether I like it or not. And I have had chickenpox, so I will see you soon. I love the police department because I never do anything wrong. And I love the parklet. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Rigmore. Anybody else for public comment?
Yes, and I'll try to be brief. My name is Glenn Silaway. I'm here tonight as a representative of the Historical Society of Morro Bay. This thing that looks like a very large flower canister is actually a high-tech time capsule. And it is not biodegradable. It's stainless steel, but we intend to put it safely someplace where it will cause no problems. And that is going to be on July 17, 2 o'clock, in City Park. We're going to have a ceremony to install this in the ground, and the only thing that's missing now is your stuff. We want this to be opened in 2064 as a way for people in that time to see what we were about in our time right now. We just finished celebrating our 50th anniversary last year. This canister is partly due to generosity of that committee and you. Thank you. Now we need to collect some things for the next 50 years out. Your family vacation is fine. Your photos, your how you got here, stories that we can digitize. It's not very big, we want to digitize everything, and give people in the future personal insight on how we lived and what we do and our love of Morro Bay and how we live here. So I urge you to submit your things. You can send them to the library. You can send, go to our historicalmorobay.org. The website has a link to a page that will tell you how to submit things. It says, "Do it by June 15." Don't believe that, you're still in time. June 10 would be, or July 10 would be great, and we will digitize whatever you can get to us. If you have it in digital format already, that's perfect. We'll include these things and celebrate all of that on July 17. Thank you.
Thank you, Glenn.
Janice House, Morro Bay. Six weeks ago, it came to light that Morro Bay doesn't have a hiring policy. The city council needs to direct staff to create a hiring policy for the city. According to the Tribune articles, it appears that our city manager thinks that an internal promotion is equivalent to the process that we use, that was used to hire our deputy city manager. To point out a few differences, with a, with a internal promotion, the job exists, there's money in the budget, there's some approval process, and you have personal experience working with that person. The deputy city manager process didn't have any of those. If I was qualified for the deputy city manager, I might be suing you right now because it was not an equal opportunity process. And according to the Tribune, other cities in the county have such a policy, so it shouldn't take a lot of work to get those and tweak them to work for Morro Bay. Let me reiterate, you need to direct staff to develop a hiring policy for the city to keep us out of legal issues down the road. And I'm going to return to speak about this during public comment until it's done.
Thank you, Janice. Anybody else for public comment?
Good evening, mayor and council members. My name is Lena Thomas. I'm the owner of Coles Bookstore, where we have almost completely eliminated styrofoam. It has not been a difficult thing to do, but that's not why I'm here tonight. Unlike large urban cities like LA and San Francisco, we are blessed in lovely downtown Morro Bay with lots of garden and open spaces. On Main Street alone, between Harbor Street and Morro Bay Boulevard, one finds the Top Dog Garden, the Coles Bookstore Garden, a small outdoor patio at Kitty's Kitchen, a garden between Kitty's and San Prince, a large patio at the Art Association, and finally, on the corner of Main Street and Morro Bay Boulevard, one finds the large, open courtyard beside Grandma's Yogurt. The city of Morro Bay leases this large corner property, subleasing the small building on-site to the owners of Grandma's Yogurt. In 2014, the city paid $9,600 of our tax dollars for their share of the lease on this property. Also in 2014, the city debuted in the Grandma's Yogurt building, the only public restroom available downtown. Grandma's maintains our community restaurant, much to the enormous relief of all the local businesses on Main. To my way of thinking, Grandma's is the sensible alternative to a parklet on our block. Fourteen of my Main Street business colleagues agree. A recent quote from the Morro Bay Chamber of Commerce website reads, "Grandma's is the place in Morro Bay for local residents and our out-of-town visitors to meet and visit." The courtyard at Grandma's is off-street, so there are no lost parking spaces. There are none of the traffic hazards that exist when one sits in a narrow street with quickly-moving traffic. Traffic is calmed by crosswalks at the intersections, allowing for safe street crossings. Grandma's owners welcome everyone, families, children, pets. The courtyard is open every day of the week until 10 on Friday and Saturday nights. Food and non-alcoholic beverages from elsewhere are always welcome. Council, you have pledged yourselves to encourage and support local businesses. The parklet is not a business. I urge you to join your local chamber and the vast majority of Main Street businesses in supporting Grandma's and the courtyard on the corner for street-side, safe outdoor space. Thank you.
Thank you, Lena.
I also have some papers.
Okay, thanks. Public comment is open. For those that like to speak, please come forward. Seeing none, I'll close public comment, bring it back to council. To my left, to my right, any follow-up comments?
I would like to just point out, for those that aren't familiar with the process, we do have an item on our agenda for future agenda items, so that comes at the end of the meeting, so we won't be responding to any of those requests now. It would happen at the end of the meeting if we do so.
Thanks. John, or anybody else on council? Good. Mr. Buckingham, any...
Sure, if I could. Lots of great comments. Just like to address one briefly, reference hiring policy. Your city has a very well-developed hiring policy. It's several inches thick. It's part of our personal rules and regulations. What one thing that does is it exempts a number of positions from the normal hiring process. The city attorney and the department heads, the hiring process falls outside of that policy. So should we, should we develop some policy or some guidance for those positions? That may well be a great idea, but the city does have a very well-developed hiring policy for all of the other city positions.
Thank you. Any comments from council? Christine?
Thanks for addressing that. Is that available to the public, easily accessible on the web? If we could just give that address, where they could find that, our city's hiring policy, or we could post it, or by request, or however. Just, my sense is that it's a public document?
Yes. I don't have the web address offhand, but it's a, yeah, it's a public, absolutely, it's a public document and is accessible. We'll make sure it's out there.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Okay, with that, we'll move on. We've got public comment. We've got ten minutes prior to our public hearings, but we also have consent agenda, and we'll move on to consent agenda. With consent agenda, we have approximately, we have nine items on consent, and are there any items? I'll open it for public comment, but are there any items from council that would like to poll? Seeing none, item A7 I'd like to poll. Seeing none. With that, I'll open it for public comment for anybody that'd like to speak to, any item on the consent agenda? Seeing none, I'll close public comment, bring it back to council. I'd take a motion to approve all items on the agenda with the exception of A7. So move?
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Heding, a second by Mr. Smuckler. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye? Opposed? None? Motion carries 5-0. And then item A7, I just wanted to speak to this a little bit. It might seem somewhat obvious to some, but for the public and my reviewing this, I just ask for a little explanation on just informing us what the local agency investment fund is, a little, and so it's a little bit more informative for our folks that are reading our staff reports and such. And so I'd look to Ms. Slaton for that, please.
Thank you, Mayor Irons. The Local Agency Investment Fund is operated by the state of California. It's a voluntary program that's been in position since 1977. All of the cities and agencies can join, and they put their money into their specific account, and it's thrown into a large pool and invested as a pool. So it's a very good investment opportunity for us. When the economy fell, unfortunately, Leif had a lot of long-term investments, and so right now, they're only performing at .29%. But when you realize that a one-year CD is barely at .95 to 1%, it's not great, but it's not that bad. So investment earnings aren't very good right now. Leif is getting better. It's, it's a good program. It's a nice program for all the cities. Does that help explain a little bit what it is?
Yeah, and I know the report covers, you know, explains a little bit. We have designated officers and why we changed that and everything. Just wanted to make sure that was clear as well. Any other questions? Okay, all right. Seeing none, I'll take a motion to approve item A7. We have a motion by Christine.
Second.
Second by John. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye? Opposed? None? Motion carries 5-0. Thanks very much. And that'll move us on to our public hearings, at which time, we've got about eight minutes prior to that. We can't officially open our public hearings until 7:00. We could entertain a break or moving on to another item. Any requests from council? We have, we can move on to new business items. Probably the least discussed item would be item D2, if we wanted to get through that one?
Oh, yeah, we might be able to get through that. Yeah, let's do that.
You want to give a, you want to give that a stab, Scott?
I have Cindy here. She's going to give.
Okay, she'll be probably happy for that, you know? We'll get it done early, and then we can get gone. We'll probably run a little into 7:00. That's okay. We'll get back to public hearings. I'm looking for nods from our city attorney. We're okay? Good. Trying to keep things moving. So with that, let's jump over to item D2, and we have support for that. So item D2 is a new business item, a request to utilize $50,000 of the affordable housing and lieu funds for the Ocean View Manor Apartments, senior housing development at 456 Eleanor Street. And that would be, Mr. Graham, or Janine?
Cindy.
Cindy, excuse me. I'm sorry, Janine, Cindy, I already always do that. Sorry about that. Go ahead.
That's fine. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the council.
I do that.
So this is new business item, as you stated, for 456 Eleanor Street, the Ocean View Manor Apartments. And the city on, thank you. So on April 23rd, the city received a request for $50,000 of city affordable housing in lieu funds. I prepared just a few brief slides to explain to you what this is. This is a vicinity map that shows where it is. Ocean View Manor is a 40-unit affordable senior development project owned and managed by People Self-Help Housing. Okay, just a second here while I figure out these slides. Oh, okay. Can you go back a slide for me, please? So Ocean View Manor, as I said, 40 units. It was, it was approved by the city in 1989. It was funded with U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development's Section 202 funds, and it also has project-based Section 8 rental assistance. It's been in existence ever since. The funding source that it has is unique, so that it allows for rental income to be no more than 30% of an individual's monthly household income. And with this 202 funding, for short, it is a 30-year term HUD regulatory agreement that's coming up in 2019. The applicant in, can you go to the next slide, please? That was a picture of it. So the applicant, People Self-Help Housing, local nonprofit affordable housing developer, requested assistance from the city in, as, to be used as local match for purposes of their funding application to the State Tax Credit Allocation Committee. If successful, the applicant would use their funding award to make improvements to the development as far as solar upgrades, renovating some of the apartments. It would still be 40 units. They would still have project-based rental assistance. They did apply in 2014 for funding, and they were unsuccessful. And so with this year's funding application, which is due July 1st, they are requesting assistance from the city to, as I said, count that toward local match to strengthen their application. And if funded, they, as the last bullet says, is they would use the funding award to refinance the existing HUD funding and provide that to be low-income housing tax credit funding. And with that program requirement, it requires a 55-year affordability requirement. So that would provide the city an additional 51 years of affordability and would be a great preservation of existing affordable housing. Not so much preservation as in creating the additional years of funding. And can you go to the next slide, please? So staff reviewed this request, and as you'll see in your staff report, the city does have approximately $150,000 in its affordable housing in lieu balance, and the applicant is requesting $50,000. This would be structured as a grant, and it would be used, as I said, for match for their funding application. It's consistent with the city's housing element policy, H.0.6, and it's also consistent with the city's zoning ordinance. And so that is my brief presentation. Staff recommends the council consider this and adopt Resolution 51-15. And I would like to point out, there is a small typo in the resolution. In the first whereas section, I referenced Oceanside Gardens. That's actually a neighboring development on Elm Street, but it is Ocean View Manor is the name of the development. And I believe there is also a representative from People Self-Help that may be available if there are other questions. Thank you.
Great, Janine, thanks for that. Any questions from council before we go to public comment? Any questions? Matt?
Yes. Gene, thinking of the $50,000, oh, Cindy, Janine, I'm so sorry.
Even I did that.
Okay, I'm so sorry. I was listening to Gene. Yeah, I've been out in the sun too much. What is the, this housing and lieu money, where does that, how does that get, how do we build a fund of $150,000?
The city collects a small fee with every building permit application, and that's assessed as we issue, at the time of issuance of building permits.
So we build that up over time? In your recollection, have we given out this money, granted it before?
Yes, the city granted approximately 600,000 of in lieu funds to the Moro Del Mar Project, which is the housing project currently under construction on Main and Driftwood, and that was for land purchase.
Thank you. Thanks, Matt. John?
Thank you, Cindy. And so the question I have, Cindy, is this one. Are there any other projects in the coming fiscal year that you know you'll be tapping the fund for, or that will be coming online? Trying to recall from the budget if there were any, but do you know of any that might be coming?
I believe our community development managers had some contact with potential projects that may be in the pipeline, and that's why the community development department made the recommendation for 50,000.
In other words, we haven't had a project that's come forward yet. We've had, had some discussions with folks out there, but nothing's pending, nothing's imminent. And this is a relatively small request to get a pretty good bang for your buck, I think, and extending for 50-plus years the affordability range for this project. That's why we're supporting it, and we thought it was a good cause and worthwhile to bring to the council.
Thanks, Scott.
Thank you, Scott.
No, appreciate that. Okay, with that, we'll open up for public comment. For anybody that'd like to speak to this item, please come forward. Anybody for public comment? Welcome.
This is Carlos Semenes. I'm with People Self-Help Housing, the project manager for this development, Ocean View Manor. And we'd actually prefer that it not be a grant, but it's structured as a residual receipts loan, if we could. That means that would, there would be an expectation of repayment at some point in the future as the project starts to cash flow and there's operating cash on the table. We would pay a portion of those proceeds from operating income back to the city, and it would, in effect, serve as a revolving, somewhat a revolving fund back into your in lieu fees in the future. And there's a basis for that request for residual receipts. When we apply to the Tax Credit Committee, they don't, they don't consider grants as favorably as they do residual receipts loans when, from cities, and it also triggers some issues with potentially prevailing wage and other requirements that may be required. So we try to structure these as residual receipt loans. That would be our preference, actually, with a future expectation of payment based on operating income proceeds down the line. And we would do that in common, in consult with city staff, providing our operating budget, our annual operating budget, and as it cash flows and there's excess cash on the property, we would pay a portion back to the cities in lieu fee to kind of recycle those funds moving forward.
Great. Thank you.
Basically, yeah. Okay. If there's any other questions, I'd be glad to answer them. But it's going to be a great project when we get funded and we do this.
All right. Thank you.
For the city.
Appreciate it. With that, any more public comment for this item? Seeing none, I'll close public comment, bring it back to council, and just confirm with staff some of the comments on that modified request, if you can elaborate a little bit and kind of confirm or support or otherwise?
No, we're happy to make the change. It'll probably involve an agreement that we would enter into with them, but we can certainly change the resolution to reflect that. So if you incorporated that into a motion, we could make that happen.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any other comments from council? No, you want to start off?
Yeah, I think a great deal just got better with that suggestion. So knowing how challenging, what a challenge affordable housing is, particularly for seniors in our community, and what a asset this, this project already has been to the community, I don't have any question about this. I think the value we're getting with the energy and water retrofits, as well as the extended 50-year-plus, preservation of the affordability units makes complete sense to me.
Thank you, John. This is a no-brainer that became even better no-brainer for me, so thank you very much for coming forward and adding that residual receipt loan provision. Thank you.
Thank you. And definitely would like to echo the comments and support the staff work on this, the requests from the People's Self-Help Housing and project on this, and maintaining affordable housing as it stands. So I'm in support of this. Matt?
I'm in support also.
Okay. Christine?
Yes, this is one of the best projects we have in the city. It's incredible, it's a big building theme. It's, they're lovely. They're very, very well-designed and great for seniors. It's right behind a grocery store, which you just could not ask for more. I mean, literally, I see people all the time walking from their home to their grocery store, and it's close to, we keep getting more exciting restaurants in North Morro Bay, so it really is just a beautiful project. And my other question would be, why can't we get more of projects just like that? It's just really such a high-quality project. It's exciting to hear that People Self-Help Housing is committed to upgrading it and making it even better for another half-century. So that's great. I was wondering if staff would just like us, I think in the fourth whereas, and then in the now, therefore, be it resolved, we mention grant? And I'm wondering if it would be simply, well, I don't want to presume, but like your recommendation, would it be just as easy to insert residual receipts loan, or would you have other wording that, and then we could do this tonight, maybe we wouldn't have to come back?
Yeah, I think that's fine. We'll just change it to residual receipts loan, whereas referring to grants, and you make that motion, we'll make it happen.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Thanks.
Great. And with that, we could make a motion that amends, since I do have support for this, so we could make a staff recommendation to adopt Resolution 51-15 with the following corrections. One be the spell on the first whereas, where it identifies Ocean View Manor, and then every portion of the resolution that identifies grant, that we would substitute that with residual receipts loans. Is that adequate? Okay. And with that, that's the motion.
Second?
A second type. So motion, and a motion by Mayor Irons, second by Councilmember Johnson, and we got that one down. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye? Opposed? None? Motion carries 5-0. Thanks very much for that. And Cindy, that takes you out a little bit early. Thanks very much. Appreciate it. Okay.
Item D. It's sunny out there.
That concludes item D2, and now we can resume back to our normal course of business and proceed item, onto public hearings. We'll move on to item B1. Item B1 is a conditional use permit, UPO 058. It's a revised concept and precise plan. This item has been noticed. There's also been a request to continue this item, so we will open it up for public comment and then continue the item to a date certain, which would be August 24, 2015. And I'll look to Mr. Graham. Do you want to do any opening comments on this?
Just as a request came through the applicants, some of the representatives were not going to be available, and so they made the request to continue to the August meeting, August 24th meeting.
Okay. Great. Any further comments from council? Christine?
I would just like us to double-check the calendar on that date. Is that the date we're making an adjustment from a Tuesday to a Monday? So I would just like to make that clear to folks. We might as well start promoting that now, if that's the date that is indeed the date certain.
August 23rd? August 24th is correct. Great. Great, double-check.
Okay, so interesting, just finally, there's at least one applicant in the, in the audience, and since we are making an adjustment to the normal council calendar for that particular meeting, it would be Monday, August 24. Okay. Thanks.
Okay. And with that, we can open up for public comment. I know the applicant's here. I don't know if the applicant wants to comment or at this point, but we'll open up for public Welcome.
George Lee, Morro Bay. Here we are again, following a row of Measure D again. As far as I'm concerned personally, I think Measure D is passe. It should be something done with it, corrected, but it still exists. Now here to you, taking a part of this project, you're taking an illegal restaurant, and you're putting it over in another illegal place. I don't understand how you can do this without somebody going to step up and say, hey, what are you guys doing? We've already put two illegal restaurants down there, and, and other things, too. Not just, just restaurants that got in there, but there's been many things that we've, that has gone down there to violate Measure D. I think somewhere along the line, you guys are going to have to do something about this. Either make some adjustments, but this has to go before the public, and this should be brought up for a vote. So I can't understand how we can just, I can't even understand how we got through the Coastal Commission. And like I said, the tie bone was an illegal restaurant. I was asked, when it was put in there, to not cause any trouble. So I said, I don't care. They're in there. But they knew at the time, and they let the tie bone go down there, that it was illegal. It was against Measure D. So I think you're going to, somewhere you're going to have to deal with this. And I hope we get Measure D around to, to the point where it's feasible. I mean, I think it's outdated. Maybe it shouldn't have ever been put in, but it definitely is outdated. But you're still going to have to deal with it. And like I say, if you keep violating it, there's other people going to say, well, how about me? What's good for the goose is good for the gander. Maybe I want to go two stores with the Great American Fish Company. You know?
Public comment is open for anybody who'd like to speak to this item. Seeing none, I'll close public comment, bring it back to council. And any council comments from here? This is just a continued item at this point. Any comments? Christine, did you have a comment?
I just wanted to mention a question that I asked staff and the response I received. Just, it's from Ms. Janseth. And I was asking about the last time this project had come before the public. And the last time it came before the public, and I'll read the email because I have it here, and correct me. And the date, you can slide on the dates. I'll just give you the month. But the council heard concept plan on March of 2008, and then final concept approval was May of 2008. So I was just sort of wondering where we were in the process with this project. So just wanted to share that with the public and folks who may be wondering about it. And I'm sure we'll have a lot of information when this comes back to us in August. Is that correct, Ms. Janseth?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so just wanted to point that out. That's all.
Okay. And with that, I've got one more question for council, and something I brought up earlier, the question of having to continue this item to a date certain means that it doesn't have to be re-noticed. And I was considering bringing that up to council. And then, you know, normally we would have a regular city council meeting on Tuesday, but considering this is going to be a special meeting on Monday, just because we're rescheduling, I just want to consider, have council consider and discuss whether or not we should re-notice that. If you understand the technicality, if we'd consider this as a, continue this to a date certain, we don't have to re-notice. And if it fell on a normal, regular city council meeting, that might make sense because, you know, people are focused and paying attention to that. And I think the exception to this, because our city council meeting is moved to Monday, I just want us to consider re-noticing this. And I would maybe, you know, I think considering the applicant has made this request, perhaps the expense should go to the applicant. And since he's here, he might want to come up and talk to this. But I just want to have that discussion with council. You know, at first I was thinking, ah, you know, we have done this in the past as far as continue items and not re-noticed it. But given the circumstance of being on a Monday, you know, people might not be as focused. So I just wanted to throw out that for discussion with council and staff. And perhaps our applicant might be here, but I'm looking around. It looks like I might get a response from Mr. Graham.
I think it's a good idea to re-notice. We should do it.
Okay. And with that, but then, re-notice at whose expense is the other question?
As it sits right now, it'll be ours.
Just common course of doing business, then?
I think it's well worthwhile. I think it's a very good point on the change of the date. I think we should absolutely re-notice it.
All right, good. And enough said. We're good on that, then. That's the only input on that. We're going to continue the item. There's no more discussion needed. We need to just make a vote to make sure that we'll continue the item to a date certain. So I'd make a motion, we continue this item to a date certain of August 24, 2015, and re-noticing the item. So a motion by Mayor Irons, a second by council member Smucker. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Aye, opposed? None, motion carries. Thank you for that. And that concludes item B1. And we'll move on to item B2. And item B2, Mr. Leibig, you going to open up on this one? This is Resolution Number 4915 directing the levy of the annual assessment for the Cloisters Landscaping and Lighting and Maintenance Assessment District.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, this is the third step in the process that we go through with our annual assessment district procedures. And this is a request to adopt Resolution Number 4915 that would direct the levy of the annual assessments for the Cloisters Landscape and Lighting Maintenance District. Staff recommends that we conduct this final public hearing and take public testimony and approve the mentioned resolution. Last month, on May 12, at the city council meeting, you adopted Resolution Number 2315 that approved the engineer's report that described the annual maintenance to be completed at the Cloisters Park open space. We did make some minor corrections to that engineer's report as brought up in that hearing, mainly typographical. I think we finally got all those commas in the right place and everything spelled correctly after so many years. And the council declared, intend to levy the annual assessment to finance the maintenance. The assessment is projected at $1,241.20 per assessable lot in the Cloisters subdivision, and it will be collected by the county assessor's office. As part of the assessment process, the city did prepare an engineer's report that was adopted and set this date and time as the time for the public hearing. We noticed that in the newspaper as required. The council must hold a public hearing prior to the levy of the assessment. In previous years, the staff had advertised this as a protest hearing, and we were in error as advertising this as a protest hearing. Since there are no increases in the assessments being proposed, no protest hearing is required. And there are no protests, or excuse me, no proposed increases in the annual assessment. With that, staff recommends the continuation of the assessment district to fulfill the city's obligation in maintaining the Cloisters Landscape and Lighting Maintenance Assessment District. And staff will be continuing communicating with the owners to maintain our relationship and noticing upcoming events which may impact the residences. In fact, we have a poll out there right now for our annual walk through the Cloisters Assessment District to assess conditions and take recommendations from the residences. So that is, we're honing in on that date. Many people have responded, but those out there, I think we'll give it a few more days and then set the date. To be honest with you, it's looking like Monday, July 13, as the majority have responded with that date. So I think that's probably what we'll do, but I'll give it another week or till the end of the week before we send out those final notices. That concludes my presentation and be happy to answer any questions from council.
Thanks, Mr. Leibig. Any questions from council? Christine?
Just a brief mention. I was wondering, now we didn't get any protest letters this time. Does the neighborhood know about that as well? I mean, I think for a lot of reasons we're not getting protest letters, but I was just wondering, I know the liaison to the neighborhood is often keeping up with city info. So we just, did we not receive any?
We have not received any protest letters on this. We did not advertise it as a protest hearing. Also, we advertised it as a public hearing for the continuation of the assessment. So it is not a protest hearing. It is a public hearing for the continuation of the assessment. We did speak with the representative about that, and...
Okay. I'm not sure everybody understands that the nuances of protest hearing and hearing because it's an annual renewal. So I think we do get letters annually, but I just wanted to, I didn't know if you didn't receive any.
No letters were received protesting this.
Okay. And so we now changed, we cleaned up the system, the process?
Yes, we're doing it correctly as of this year.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you, Christine. Matt, any questions? John or Noah? And I guess the other question, just to follow up with Christine's comment, which I think is a good one, just for clarification. We do still continue the outreach, both with the Cloisters and the other assessment district, which would be North Point. But so there is a line of communication. Should there be any comments from that assessment district?
Oh, of course, Ms. Mayor. Yes, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Perfect. And with that, we'll open up for public comment on item B2 for the levy of the annual assessment for the Cloisters Landscaping and Lighting Maintenance Assessment District. For those who'd like to speak, please come forward.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council, Barry Brand in Mill Bay. There is a small change this year that may lead us into a little confusion. In the past, because it was considered a protest hearing, as I understand it, there were individual letters to the property owners. But this year, because it's not a protest hearing, the only notification was in the newspaper. There were no individual letters to the property owners. So I think there is a change here, a change that is appropriate. I don't disagree with the staff's recommendation, but it's a dramatic change. If you were the property owner and every year you received a letter, but now this year you didn't receive one, even though the amount hasn't changed. And after the confusion we had over the last couple of years, which has been cleaned up, I think that it behooves us to maybe reexamine what we've just done and perhaps letters, and I stand to be corrected if I'm wrong on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Barry. Anybody else for public comment? Seeing none, I'll close public comment and bring it back to council. And I think one of my last comments to Rob, I think it's a great, great question, Barry, but I think one of the, the other part of that is the diligent contact with the Cloisters Assessment Group and that communication through this process. So Rob, I don't know if you want to speak a little bit more to that, but happily, I think we've had really, really good contact and work with the Cloisters Group in and of itself. So if protest letters haven't necessarily gone out, that isn't to say that there hasn't been good contact and conversations. So Rob?
Right. We have our quarterly meetings, and we use the Cloisters Yahoo group's email that I think most of the residents have signed up for, for any outgoing communications that we have. It's a good group to use. And like I said, we're going to be having our annual walk, if we can settle on that date, coming up in the second week in July. So yes, I believe there's good communications between the city staff and the Cloisters Group.
Great. Thank you for that. There's no more discussion. To my left, Christine, you want to start us off?
I would just say that we've seen a progression of improvements the last six or seven months. And we often hear from the Cloisters Group that they are not shy. And they pay quite close attention to the things that the city is doing in regard to their neighborhood. And I think they're not here this evening, and this would be the prime time for them to come and speak. And they have in the past. And we've received letters and emails in the past, sometimes up to 15 or 16 or 17. So tonight, that, and they understand the schedule. They're quite aware and prepared every year. So I think that this is a celebration moment that we have no public comment from the Cloisters resident, and we had a public comment, but we have no one from the group particularly that this impacts directly. So I would just compliment our neighbors and that neighborhood for being patient with our process. And thanks again to staff for working more diligently. And it really isn't a true annual walk. This is the second one we've had in this year, but it will be, I'm sure, an annual event moving forward.
It's the second annual.
Second annual officially. I think, did we do the first one in 2014?
I wasn't a party to that, but that's, rumor has it that you did the first one in 2014.
Second annual.
All right, okay. That's great. But I look forward to, you know, this event every year. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Matt?
With all this said, I think Barry, you have a very good point. But I think also the outreach that Dave's done and Rob's done, and without having the Cloisters here, this is emblematic that they like the attention they're getting, and they think the city's responding to their needs. And by doing this and then not having them here, so I'm fine with it.
Great. Great work. And I'm in support of this resolution and the continuing work that we do annually on this. John?
I just echo what Matt said, and I think there's been adequate outreach and good communication, and I'm in support.
No?
I agree.
Great. And with that, I'll take a motion to approve, let's see, Resolution Number 4915, approving the levy of the annual assessment for the Cloisters Landscaping and Lighting Maintenance Assessment District for fiscal year 2015-16. So moved. Motion by Matt, second by, second by John Heding, the council member Heding. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Aye, opposed? None, motion carries five oh. Thanks for that. And we'll move on to item B3, which is Resolution Number 15, or excuse me, Resolution 5015. And it's directing the levy of the annual assessment for the North Point Natural Area Landscaping and Lighting Maintenance Assessment District. Rob?
Very similar process. The dollars are a little bit less, but we're requesting city council adopt Resolution 5015, continuing the assessment for the North Point Natural Area Lighting, Landscaping, Lighting Maintenance District. Again, the first meeting in May, on May 12, city council adopted Resolution 2415 that approved the engineer's report and set this date for the public hearing to levy that assessment. The assessment is $564.50 per assessable parcel in the North Point subdivision, and will again be collected by the county assessor's office. This is a public hearing, and we recommend that city council, again, adopt Resolution 50-15, continuing the assessment for the North Point Natural Area. That concludes my report and happy to answer. Any questions on this one, too?
Thanks. Any questions from council? Seeing none to my left, none to my right. I'd open up for public comment for anybody who'd like to speak to this item. Seeing none, I'll close public comment, bring it back to council. Any discussion or motion?
I make a motion that council adopts Resolution Number 5015 directing the levy of the annual assessment for the North Point Natural Area Landscaping and Lighting Maintenance Assessment District.
Second?
We have a motion by Christine, second by Noah. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye, opposed? None, motion carries five oh. Great, that concludes our public hearing items. And let's just take a short five-minute break. We'll get on to our next significant item here, the Harvard Advisory Board Recommendation for Marine Facilities. And so we'll come back at, let's say, 7:35. We'll take a short recess. Thank you.